The town council meeting to order, if anyone will please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, want to welcome everyone here tonight at our first council meeting of the new year. I don't know about you, I've already made some typos transitioning from 24 to 25, but that's normal and it will clear up. Also, I appreciate the department heads being here, showing your support. Moving on, approval of minutes, I hope everyone reviewed them and no additions or changes, then they stand approved as is. Report of town manager, Mr. Warner.
Thank you Mayor Stanley, members of council. A few things to bring to your attention tonight. Starting back in, at its June 11th, 2024 meeting, town council adopted an ordinance including a $5 increase in customer charges for certain electric tariff groups. Per the terms of that ordinance, that increase went into effect January 1st, 2025. There was some discussion at that June meeting about aligning that increase with the electric rate study, but the ordinance that was amended and adopted at that meeting did not include that condition. Do want to note that Raph Tellis, since then, has been contracted to conduct the electric rate study that is underway and they are currently working with town staff to obtain the data they require to produce their report. On administrative note, I just want to extend thanks to all of our colleagues for their efforts recovering from the freezing rain and ice event that occurred overnight on January 5th, and also the most recent snow in addition to that this past weekend, some of which is still with us and probably will be for a while. And I'll close by noting that offices will be closed on Monday, January 20th, in observance of the state and federal holiday.
All right, any questions for Mr. Warner? One last one, you've mentioned this, what date in February is the budget work session?
Saturday, February 22nd.
22nd, okay, thank you. All right, appearances before council, I believe we have one, Erica McFaden. Step right up, call state your name, you know the routine, your name, place of residence, and tell us what's on your mind.
Absolutely, my name is Erica McFaden and I am the manager of, some of you well know by your emails this week, of the Bedford, Virginia Farmers Market, and do live in good Virginia, have a business here in town, and I also run the Farmers Market here in town. So, good evening to all the council members and staff here and the visitors, and congratulations to the newly sworn in and returning councilmen, thank you so much for your time tonight, and I appreciate it. So, onward, onward. I just wanted to take a few minutes to introduce myself or reintroduce myself and the market to all of you as we move on to the 2025 season. So, in 2024, the market ran weekly on Saturday mornings from May through October, and numbers wise, we have an average of 20 to 35 vendors attending each week, whose earnings range from $300 to $700. This year, we saw an average of 498 visitors weekly, and over 1500 at our holiday events, which was fantastic and a big jump from 2023 to 2024. The market is also proud to support families and individuals by providing supplemental nutrition assistance program, also known as SNAP, and this year, we hope to add two more assistance programs for senior citizens and a special spending program for children's education. We're also excited to partner with the Virginia Cooperative Extension this year to provide children's programming, and it was a great success, and they will be returning this season. We've been blessed to be able to provide live music all 26 weeks of the market and hold well-attended healthy event, a well-attended, healthy living event with the community partners like the YNC, Bedford Area Master Gardeners, Bedford Urban Gardens, Little Lotter Flower Farm, One Forest School, so the Healthy Foods Committee helps a lot with that, it was fantastic, just to name a few of our partners, and we partnered with the Christmas tree lighting event for our December market this year, a fantastic event for everyone, all of which we plan to do again this year, as it was not only fun, but such a boost to our local economy and small businesses, businesses that then at the market. And personally, for me, and this is why I'm a little bit nervous, because I get a little verklempt when I talk about the market, because it's a passion of mine, it is a volunteer position, and it is a work of heart, and I love it so much, and have been proud to be the manager for, this is going to be our sixth year running it, with my husband, with our loyal market volunteers, and all of our wonderful vendors. I mean, this market is not just numbers and events to me. Because of the work I've been able to do with our vendors, patrons, and community partners, a community has formed. Vendors have been able to grow their businesses, we've connected with more community partners, the people who visit, and our vendors have become friends and family. We have customers who never fail to show up every week, they check in when they'll be on vacation, so we don't worry about them, they bring their children, their dogs, they bring their visiting families to show off our market, to show off our town, they're excited to be there, and they support us just as more, just as much as we support them, in a nurturing and safe and welcoming environment. And all of us at the Farmers Market appreciate the support we see, we receive from the town, especially when we see you there. So, we hope you can make some time to see what we're up to down at the market this year, and I thank you so much for your time, and please feel free to catch me after the meeting if you have any questions, and we'll hopefully see you at the Farmers Market.
Thank you, we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
All right, council comments. David?
Well, I'm one of the new guys on council, I think I've walked in and met most of y'all, but thanks for being here, it's a, it's a big part of being here on council is to, is to hear from y'all, and we work for y'all, so please pass the word, come on, come on in and let us know what you're thinking, but thanks for being here.
What? All right, oh, again, I'd like to thank everybody there, everyone for being here. I did hear some good comments about how clean that the roads were in the town of Bedford, and that made me feel very good that I'm an integral part of the state.
I'd like to give out a thank you to our electric department. I was in Lynchburg earlier this week, and one of my neighbors called and said, asked me if I knew how much longer the power's going to be out, and I said, well, when I left at nine, the power was on, what's, what's going on? And I said, yeah, we heard this power, and then the power went off, and I said, okay, well, by the time I got back from Lynchburg, the power was on, so, you know, and that's a whole lot quicker turnaround than, you know, some of our friends and relatives have experienced, so, and thank you to our electric department.
I just want to thank all the citizens to be here tonight. Thank Tom and John Wagler, thank Tom for keeping the roads clean, and John Wagler to keep it the power on. Welcome to fire department being here tonight, thank you for being here, and thank you for all the citizens to be here. I know it's been a couple, rough two weeks, but I think every day is going along smoothly or whatever, so hopefully that we won't have no more bad weather like we used to had, had in the last two weeks, and hopefully we'll move forward into spring, so. And thank the Farmers Market, Erica McFaden for being here today, so.
All right, well, thank you everyone again for being here, thank the staff for what they did. I also wanted to mention that we lost a longtime community member, he was a crossing guard for us for a while, he volunteered at sheriff's department, I believe he was a fire department member one time, Pee Wee Carter. So, we lost him this week, and I just want to send condolences to his family, his daughter is the dispatcher for the town police and town fire department too, so, just wanted to mention, mention that.
I'm Jay Ippolito, I'm one of the new guys here, glad to see such a good turnout here with y'all. Erica, we do appreciate what you do, Tom, the roads, and like David said, we do work for y'all, so if there's anything we can do to help y'all, feel free to let us know.
I too want to thank Erica for what you've done, for me with that. I come down there occasionally, when, when I'm not in Roanoke babysitting, but nonetheless, I try to divide my time, but we do support you all and continue to. But, I want to thank all the departments that were involved in the snow and ice storm, police, public works. My trash is picked up on Monday, usually in the afternoon. It was picked up by, I believe, nine o'clock Monday morning, when it was at, probably at its worst, so I appreciate what they did. Electric goes without saying, I mean, when you have to get out there and ice and snow, it is no fun. That is probably the most dangerous nature situation you could, should be in. The snow is one thing, ice and freezing rain is another, but we appreciate what everyone did, and as Daryl said, I think we might have been out two, maybe three hours at the most, and, and that's, that's long for Bedford Electric, and they do a great job, and I appreciate it. Also, I want to thank Bart for closing the town office, for looking after the people in the community, keep them away from trying to get in here, because there are some who would say if the town office is open, they are going to try to come in and pay their bill or make a payment of some kind, so, very, very good decision. Also, to the council members, I've passed out the committee assignments, the seating, hopefully you all are okay with that, but if you have any questions, or just don't like it, just talk to Daryl. All right.
Thanks, thank you.
You're welcome. I don't think there's any revisions to the agenda, nothing there, so we'll move into the public hearings.
Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the town council at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, January 14, 2025, at the town municipal building, for the purpose of hearing a request for a conditional use permit for an expansion of school use in the R1 single-family residential zoning district for Bedford Primary School located at 807 College Street for a gymnasium. Applicant is the county school board of Bedford, Virginia. Any persons affected may now appear and present their views at this hearing. Information has been on file for review in the town office of planning and community development, and at this point, the...
Before I open the public hearing, I just want to make, be sure everyone understands, whoever wants to come and speak on behalf of this hearing, you're welcome to come up, state your name, your residence, where you live, and you will have approximately three minutes. Public hearing is open, all who may want to come.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Scott Beasley, with Horton Profit, we're the civil engineers on, on the project.
And, and real quick, let me make sure council understands, Scott, appreciate it, he's going to say what this is about, and then later, in the new business, we'll have the question and answer. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, I'll keep my, my comments brief, I read through your packet, of course submitted all the, the things there, but I want to just touch on a few things. You know, primarily, this is a five, it's about a 5,330 square foot gym addition, connection to the existing school building. Other improvements include a play surface in front of the, in front of the gymnasium, utility improvements and relocations, stormwater management, security fencing. The placement of the, of course you can see on your packet, the placement of the building is sort of nestled in the, the view of that building, makes it difficult to see that, that structure of mine, as well as College Street, though probably a little bit of the roof peak would be available. The height of the existing school building is approximately 16 feet, that low portion of the, of the school, the height of the new gymnasium, the top of the roof peak is 29 feet at the, at the very peak. But, the finished floor of that new building sits about four feet below the existing finished floor of the, of the existing school, so it will sit down a little, a little bit, so you won't be able to see as much of it as, as you might think. Wanted to point out during the planning commission meeting, there was a resident on College Street who lives directly across from the school, and I don't know if they're here tonight, and they can certainly voice their concerns, but they, they had some concerns about the project, and primarily what their concern was, is, is parking. I guess, well, I live on the street with the school, and I, I share frustration of driving down and being across, you know, where there's a lot of cars being parked and stuff, but this particular gymnasium is not going to add any traffic, it's not adding students. The, the existing activities that are going on in the cafeteria gymnasium now are what are going to take place there, there's no plans to add any, or hold any, any sporting events or anything of that nature, it's not even designed as a competition gym, so. There, so for that reason, there's, there's probably not going to be any change to the park, to the traffic. And, and for that reason, you know, the reasons I, I mentioned, that there's no additional parking that, that we're adding, there's no code requirement to add parking, we're not adding students, and that kind of thing, so. I think that covers everything I wanted to touch on, and then I'll just be available later for your questions.
Well, we'll probably have a few, once it gets into the new business, a few general questions, kind of like the planning commission. Thank you.
Sure.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of this project? Public hearing is closed at 7:15. All right, Mr. Warner?
Notice is hereby given of another public hearing to be held by town council at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, January 14th, for the purpose of hearing proposed changes to the text of the Bedford Town Code zoning regulations for several land uses and definitions. The request was initiated by the planning commission. Any persons affected may now appear and present their views at the hearing. Information has been on file for review in the office of planning and community development.
This public hearing is now open, anyone who would like to come and speak about this project is welcome to come. No one? Going once, twice? Public hearing is closed. All right. No consent agenda, no old business, we're getting into the new business. Forming a fire chief, I guess we just, Stacy, does it...
Yeah, I'll just mention Mayor Stanley, members of council, according to town code, the fire chief, who is typically elected from within the membership of company one, is actually appointed each, on an annual basis by town council under the appropriate town code section. Mr. Stacy Wills has been selected by the company, and he is standing before requesting formal appointment by council.
All right, if you want to, I can make a motion that we appoint Stacy Wills as chief of the fire department, if there's any discussion, we can discuss after that.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Haley and seconded by Councilman Foreman. Any discussion? Questions?
Just, the other thing, the other thing I wanted to just say was that Mr. Warner had sent us the accomplishments of the 2024 year for the fire department, and I want to just say, outstanding. You guys have done a bang-up job, so, you know, I'm waiting to see, I'm looking forward to seeing what 2025 has.
Absolutely, and if I may...
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm gonna pass out. So, it is, it's my understanding that we have not presented a annual report for the past few years, so I just kind of wanted to give y'all an updated, just something short and brief for the year 2024. So, yeah, with that, please feel free to read through it at your leisure, it's just covering some incident statistics for news dispatch too, and the total number of calls we're going to respond to as well. I did have a little statement read that I would like to read. The Bedford Fire Department has a long tradition of service to the residents and visitors of the town of Bedford, and we plan to continue that service with your help and your support. I am currently working on an updated five-year plan for the Bedford Fire Department and hope to present it to you upon its completion. Within this five-year plan, priority will be shifted to continuing to support our volunteers that continue to show up when they are called. Myself, along with the current body of officers for 2025, have made it a goal to focus on member retention, mental health, and training as our department is continuing to transition to a younger generation department. I look forward to working with all of you as we both work to support and provide this fire department with the tools and equipment necessary for them to save lives and property. Thank you for your vote of confidence, let's continue to pray and for work, and work towards another successful year. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
I just want to say that the Bedford Fire Department is top-notch, it's the number-one company in any county, I think, I mean, they always compare it to Forest, but company one always outdo Forest, so. We appreciate everything you do for our community and our town. I know company one has run calls in Benton and Lynchburg City, so. Just want to say thank you for everything you do for our community, thank you for being there, and thank you for being there so long, for the 137 years you have been the volunteer fire department in our town.
Absolutely, thank y'all.
And Stacy, I, I kind of have to echo what Mr. Haley just said. Of course, I, I pretty much grew up with that fire department as a kid, and my dad was a member for like 30 years, I actually went on some calls with him, when we'd be out working or whatever, the sirens would ring, and I'd go, gotta go. So, I, I grew up, I was never a member, but I grew up with, when it was up Mainland Depot Street.
Yes, sir.
And so, I knew how dedicated that bunch was at that time, and you all have carried on that tradition, a very rich history and very rich tradition, that you all have done well, and have kept the membership going, you've changed with the times, which you had, and you have to, but the equipment that I see out in the fire department now, I think back on, on what used to be there, I mean, it's no comparison. The ladder trucks, the building, everything is just top-notch, and you keep it clean, and it's so many things I remember as a kid, walking in where the trucks were, it's the smell of cleanliness, you, you don't forget that.
Yeah.
I mean, every time I'd walk in there, it's just that smell, that, it's cleanliness, you don't forget little things like that, but I do appreciate what you all do, keep up the good work, and I know you'll do a great job, and you have our total support.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. All right.
Actually, we do need to have a roll call.
Oh, yes, yes, so you did say that, didn't you? Roll call, Shawna.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
And Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Vote carries with all members, voting aye.
All right, the resolution for the proposed conditional use permit.
On December 5th, 2024, the planning commission held a public hearing to decide on a recommendation for a conditional use permit for a school use expansion to allow a gymnasium at Bedford Primary School located on Ashland Avenue and College Street. The agent for the applicant spoke at the public hearing as well as one citizen across from the site. Commissioners asked the agent about the height of the gym, which is 29 feet, if lighting would be visible, response was only as needed. Response was only as needed. How high brick is on the side elevations? Response was eight feet. Whether the gym was regulation size for competitions? The answer is that it is not. What would be included in the multipurpose interior? That response was open area bathroom and custodial storage. The timing of construction, which is early 2025, and the adequacy of parking on the site to accommodate the gym expansion. The response to that was no expansion of the 52 spaces is planned. Citizen who spoke was concerned about on-street parking conflicts if the gym would be used after school hours, which could affect on-street parking at their house. Planning Commission made a motion to recommend approval of the request. During discussion, commissioners talked about whether conditions were needed. One condition was developed to ensure that the project was built as shown on the plan submitted with the application. The motion was amended to add that condition. The project shall be developed in conformance with the site plan and architectural plans as shown with the application. That motion passed unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Tonight, town council has requested to consider a resolution to approve a conditional use permit for an expansion of a school by adding a gymnasium at Bedford Primary School located at Ashland Avenue and College Street. Council may amend or remove the recommended condition or impose additional conditions. And Ms. Zerkel is also present to handle any questions or concerns you may have.
All right, you all have heard from Mr. Warner. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Councilman Haley made the motion and Councilman Updike seconded it. All right, discussion.
Only discussion I would have, I think, to address about the parking issue possibly.
You want Mr. Beasley to come back up?
Yes, if you don't mind, just make sure that we address the parking issue because there has been concerns about the parking or whatever.
Just, you know, to reiterate, you know, no students are being added. So there's, and the activities that currently go on in the school, you know, the recreation, obviously, and then special events such as Christmas pageants and those will take place in the gymnasium. So no additional parking will be added. Now, during construction, I believe, because they plan to use that side lot as a laydown area, I think they're going to probably put a temporary parking, parking lot somewhere. I'm not really sure what they have planned for that, but permanent addition.
So if it events, does it take place during the day while school is in session or after after school events?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if like the Christmas plays and things that they do, that would be after school, I think.
I'll just ask that question.
So as far as the after-school events, we typically have a monthly PTA event. That includes the Christmas program in December and typically a spring program about May for May. We typically have a fall festival that's a joint event with the elementary school. Those are our three highest attended events throughout the year. The other monthly events are typically less attended and don't require as much parking or as many people within our buildings. There's not any plans to increase any after-school or evening events at this point in time. And I wouldn't propose those because as we mentioned, it's not a regulation style court or anything within the gym. It's more of a big open space for our kids to get the exercise that they need.
So is it possible, I assume you're going to move the parking up to where people parked on the Fourth of July up there on that field beside the school? Is that where your temporary parking is going to be?
Yes, sir. We met last Thursday morning with Herten Prophet as well as Jameson Lewis to work out some of those final details. The plan is to take the last two lower lines of parking, which is 26 spaces in our current parking lot, where the construction lay down and being able to move equipment around the backside of the building. We won't be exiting the backside of the building with children for safety purposes because we don't want them near that large equipment. Those 26 spaces, the plan is to add to the top of the hill, close to the tree and the stop sign on that bus loop because there's a gentle slope there that staff would be able to park in, that temporary parking, and then walk out of the building. I didn't mention that I don't care if they leave that one way.
That would give me my question. Could they, if they left that there, would you allow people to park up there for?
I would have no objections.
Okay.
Questions?
Um, well, I'll go ahead, I'm sorry. And just so that I think everyone knows, as far as the interior of the building goes, there are no wall-mounted basketball goals or anything, sports equipment, anything like that, correct?
There are no wall-mounted hoops or anything. We don't even propose at this point in time to do regulation-sized pipelines because our kids are small. So they learn on smaller hoops to be able to practice that. So there are no wall-mounted or any regulation style hoops planned at this point.
And I think in your part of the presentation, you could call the interior a multipurpose. And that's probably a better name for this particular building as opposed to a gymnasium. There's no locker rooms. There's no basketball equipment. There's no weight equipment. There's, you know, this is a room for very young, small children to play.
Oh, I guess this has been a long time coming.
Yes, sir.
I remember when my stepdaughter was there, 15 years ago. And, you know, it's been before that, but it's talks of this gym set or open space or whatever. So hopefully y'all will move forward and this will be a great opportunity for our area over there, so.
We're looking forward to allowing our kids some more movement time during the day without having to unpack lunches and everything else if they're trying to utilize our cabin inventory.
Thank you. Okay. I did have one other question. I was looking at the way that the building is going to be attached to the existing building. And as you're looking at the front of the building, it's going to be attached to the left side, the rear of the left side of the building, okay? There's an area on, again, looking at from the front side of the building, on the right side of the proposed multipurpose building to the existing building, is going to be a fence there? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, so there will be a fence between the wing that's on Ashland Avenue and the gym. And then there will, and then, so that will essentially enclose that middle courtyard and prevent, you know, kids from getting out, people from getting in. There's also going to be, there's, I can't really, I don't have something. There's between the connector and the existing building, there's a little kind of a small area there. We're going to fence that to keep kids out of that little area.
And I guess that's where my question is, was there any thought about, as opposed to creating that safety concern there, just make that a wider hallway to come across there so that that is flush with the building so we don't have that little place where kids may be able to, we don't have to put up another fence or?
Well, I don't know architecturally, if, you know, if they considered that, but we're just going to, you know, close that off so that it's.
And, right, and that back courtyard, I've always thought it was, you know, it was a neat, you know, dry place, you know, for the students to have outside activities. But by putting this building and putting that other fence in there, it really keeps wandering off or somebody wandering in, you know, that type of stuff. I really liked the design. Yes.
Yeah, I would think security with young kids. They'll cover all their bases, I would think. I just want to say a few words. It's been a long time coming. Both of our boys went through there 25-plus years ago. Our boys are now 35, 36 years old. So I remember having a few talks with the then superintendent and it was, oh yeah, we're working on it. Well, as I say, well, they finally worked on it to where they're going to do it. I'm happy about this. I'm all for it. And, because I remember having to clear the lunch tables. I would occasionally lunch with the parents there, then to clear those for the after-school events, which weren't many. But it was all the things you had to move, then move back.
Those things are done, maybe for lunches.
Yes, you had to, the cafeteria. And I do, I have fond memories of the Christmas plays. For years, there was one song we always sang up on the rooftop, and I'm not going to impress anyone with my singing, but those things make an impression on you. They were great. The fact I've got some still on video. And, but it's very good and I know this will help improve that situation. I think all the questions I had, one thing I did have, lighting. There won't be any more street lights or any lighting in the back other than what's made at the doors on the side of the building.
There'll be some safety and security lighting for the building, but beyond that, there's nothing else.
Right, that's what I thought. But I'm happy for this. Happy to see it finally come to fruition and thank you. Any more questions?
Well, who will make the decision on whether you keep the gravel up there or not?
I'm going to, I've already told both Herten Prophet and Jameson Lewis and Bedford County's Construction that I'm happy for it to stay there for us to use. So maybe we can utilize that in the future or see if that benefits us in the future.
Anything?
The lighting is, is it going to be on a timer? Is it going to be motion sensor? Is it photo cell? How is that lighting going to be?
There are wall packs on sides and then above the doorways. They'll be on those. That'll happen over, it's just like a turn on.
Anything else?
I don't know.
Ready, ready both? Okay, Shawna.
Mr. Foreman.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito.
Aye.
Mr. Updike.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Stanley.
Aye.
Motion carries with all members voting aye.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. We'll be curious to see the finished product.
We're looking forward to that proposed to be finished in the 2025, is my understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Moving on, we need new business. Wouldn't propose zoning text changes, Mr. Warner?
From discussions at the June 6th, October 3rd, and November 7th, planning commission meetings that occurred last year, staff drafted changes to three areas of the zoning ordinances, two sections requested by town council, and various other sections from staff. The commission held a public hearing at their December 5th meeting after initiating changes at their November meeting. Added language is shown in the ordinance with an underline that is before you. For the home stays use, the main concern that council expressed was the 18-year-old age minimum being too young for renting a house. It was suggested the minimum age should be 21, 23, or 25. There was also a concern that there was not a provision to prevent renting out rooms in one house to different individual parties, and the discussion of clarifying that only the whole house may be rented to connected parties. The minimum age shown in the attached proposed amendment is 21 years old to rent. Staff found language that is intended to address the possible issue of renting rooms in one house to multiple parties in added language, and that is covered in section one of the proposed ordinance before you. For digital signs, council requested the commission to consider changes to permit digital signs in more zoning districts without a speed limit threshold and to develop standards for changes. Those are included in section two of the proposed ordinance. Proposed changes from the commission reflect a 30 mile per hour adjoining road speed minimum for digital signs that is reduced from 45 miles per hour, a 15-second message flash rate, and other regulations to limit the distraction of lighted changeable advertising. At the October 3rd meeting, the commission asked staff to quantify the acceptable amount of brightness from digital signs that would clarify dimming for ambient low light conditions. Staff researched websites for industry standards and determined a percentage or measured amount was not appropriate for the regulation since there are many variables. Industry sites recommend that clients buy the dimming option for the sign and be a good neighbor while following local regulations. Instead of measuring a number with a light meter, staff adjusted language to strengthen a requirement the signs must be equipped with functioning dimming features to avoid glare and the malfunctioning signs must be shut off until fixed. The third focus of proposed changes or items staff has been compiling for consideration since the amendments first were made back in March of 2024. The proposed changes include bringing back the car wash and automotive repair major uses that were left out of the ordinance revision, updating definitions, and clarifying language to address questions that have been received primarily on residential uses. Other typographical items have also been included, and these are included in sections three through 11 of the ordinance before you. At the commission public hearing on December 5th, no citizens spoke regarding the changes. Members did not make changes to the proposed text. They voted unanimously to recommend the changes before you to town council, and tonight, town council has requested to consider an ordinance for the proposed zoning changes that would then be in effect townwide.
All right, you all have heard the audience. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Updike, seconded by Councilman Haley.
He's trying to pull out Tim Black.
I did that on purpose. Okay, discussions.
I would like here to marry just kind of give us a brief on all three things. That's just to make sure that we clarify all the day.
You would like clarification on the three items from the?
Yeah, just a very brief day. And you ain't got to go in a lot of detail.
And to help Mary, this came back to the planning commission, and we addressed all the concerns that were made. And I think we talked quite a bit about it. And I think we pretty much addressed all the concerns that were made there. The age, the digital signs, I think all that was thoroughly covered. So Mary, you go right here.
Sure. So to address the age concern, as mentioned, the age is raised from 18 to 21 years for someone to rent a short-term rental, ride home stay. And the second part of that was to restrict the unrelated persons. It has to be all under one contract. They couldn't rent out four separate rooms of one house to different people. They would all be captured under the same contract. That was section one H. Was that new language? Next was digital signs, the new language there. Some things did not change where digital signs were already permitted. It's just where they were allowed. Right now, they're only allowing B2 zoning districts with road frontage at 45 mile an hour speed limits. So this reduces 45 miles down to 30 miles per hour. Planning Commission was presented with a map that showed the roads where the parcels that would be affected with this change. So it does bring in a lot more land commercially. It does not change for residential. They did recommend a message rate of no less than 15 seconds. So a message has to be up for 15 seconds before the next message can come on. So all of the provisions of the ordinance will still apply. Flashing messages are not allowed. Anything that can distract or imitate an emergency service vehicle. It does not, it should still prevent that too with that 15-second change rate. They still have to be monument tight design. That was one change from the planning commission. On all signs in general, they can't be a pole sign, which would be a billboard essentially. These do have to be affixed to the ground as a monument. So that did not change. We just made sure that that is indeed clear. And one thing we add was that digital signs can only be on the business that is using the advertisement. So it can't be an off-premise sign. So something here cannot be advertising on the message board here. That sign has to be for use on the property, whatever the usage. Again, like as mentioned in the memo, there is a dimming feature that these come with, and it is an expense to someone buying it, but it is something that is required for this to be sure that it isn't really bad, the rain events and other, too dark. That sign should not be glaring and that can get hard for people who are driving. And that's pretty much all for the signs. And then the last, section three through 11 things that staff has just kind of been. And then the last, section three through 11 things that staff is just kind of keeping list of things that either didn't quite add up after the ordinance changes were passed last March. Some of these we found fell out. I had someone who wanted to put it in the car wash, and I had to tell him you can't. You could have, or it fell out of the ordinance. So we're putting that back in, so that's not actually a change. Talking about the number of vehicles, that's going to now tie into where we have stacking requirements for car washes. Some other text changes, clarifying the definition of single-family dwelling. This had some old code references, the code references there don't exist anymore, so we just kept it straight to the Virginia Statewide Building Code to clean that up. Clarified what a pole sign was and what it wasn't, because we have a picture, but we didn't actually define it. And in section six, we made it very clear what is not and could not be used as residence to clarify some issues that staff has had, so it has to actually be a legal dwelling, not impermanent, things that aren't structures that people were living in. Moving on, you've got accessory dwelling units, that's already in there. That actually gave a way out for people to have another dwelling there. Let's see, moving on, other type of graphical errors, and then putting back in automobile, automotive repair services major, where that was not split out from just a gas station. So this actually puts them in a proper location where it's more heavily centered than a manufacturing district to have a number of repair services major. Put that back in, clarify its use.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions?
I'm really pleased with all the work that the planning commission has, has done with, with this. This was a, a big undertaking. With the digital signs, I'm, I'm still just a little bit puzzled on the, on the speed limit restriction. If this was in, you know, put in place to protect areas like our historic districts, I can understand that. I think I would have rather seen verbiage specific to that. But again, there's a lot of work done into it, and I think this is all things that we can, we can live with. Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a couple of questions, so that's okay.
Go ahead.
So I might, I might exactly just need clarification, like homestay, what's the primary concern here? Because we, part of it says that they didn't want, we don't want someone renting a house, I guess, and then, and then subdividing it to other people, but the, the code talks about a homestay as being an accessory use of a residential dwelling, and that, that you can rent rooms out, so I don't know why, why we're having to have that language.
So the ordinance does apparently shift. You have two ways to, someone could have a short-term rental. The existing definition has always been bed and breakfast. People come over, we can choose to permit for that. All that required was all street parking. So when a new use for homestay was created for short-term rentals that had more street guidelines in it, and one of those, what it does not prevent is someone from renting out their home. It doesn't say, you know, that it has to be owner-occupied at that time. So the fear was, is it a full house, five bedrooms, got rented out, it could be to five different people. That takes it into a different category, such as a hotel or motel. So that was the concern. So it was to, I don't think it's to get around with it being owner-occupied, but it is to try and prevent multiple parties from renting one house at the same time.
Okay. And then my only other, excuse me, question was, like in section six, where it talks about, like you said, defining a dwelling, and any lodging, type of lodging that doesn't meet the definition of dwelling, and it talks about occupying property with intent to live there, and then it talks about recreation vehicles not being one of those. And I, I guess I just want to make sure that, I know when you just talk, talking about living and stuff, it's kind of different, but I just wanted to make sure that recreational vehicles, if we do end up getting a travel park somewhere in the town, we're good to go.
Separate use. So we created that use for travel park previously to preempt, so this is to show that there weren't those people that were living in.
One clarity. Okay.
Basically, it could not be a permanent residence, nor a?
Yeah.
And then if I recall correctly, the bed and breakfast is a separate, is a separate section.
Still separate. No changes were made to that when the ordinance changes were made. You just created a new way for people to do it.
What else?
I'm good.
Good. Again, I, I, my hats off to the planning commission. They did a lot of, as you said, a lot of brainstorming, a lot, a lot of hard work on this, a lot of back and forth. But I think, I think they got it right. And then the way they went, 21 is a good age, and, and basically, we're making sure that a group of college kids cannot come in and rent separate rooms. It has to be one family, was the concern, and rightfully so.
That's a bummer.
Well, you're not old enough yet. But, but I think they did cover a lot of that, and I appreciate Mary for guiding the planning commission doing what you've done, so. Anything else? Are you ready to vote? All right, Sean?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with all members voting aye.
All right, that concludes the new business. We now have a closed session. Do I read them?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to close session pursuant to section 2.2-371188 of the Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended for consultation with legal counsel regarding the county scale house. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Councilman Haley made the motion, and then Councilman Foreman seconded. And who do we want to state?
I would like Mr. Wood.
Don't you use the green there?
Oh yeah, she's got it.
I have it. It resolves that the Council of the Town of Bedford hereby certifies that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this clarification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the council.
Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Uh, Councilman Updike second it back.
Second.
But Mr. Councilman Ippolito. Did I say that right?
Close enough.
Roelka?
Yes, Roelka.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with all members voting on.
All right, and I think that is all the business we have. And I am adjourning this meeting until January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five at five P. M. We work session in the conference room, followed by the conflict of interest training in Council Hall. Meeting is adjourned.